I'd like to call this meeting to order and I would ask the Treasurer if he would please call the roll.
Mrs. Catherine Corpus?
Here.
Mr. Michael Gebhardt?
Here.
Mr. Jim Bax?
Here.
Mrs. Annie Croft?
Here.
Mr. Greg Alek?
Here.
Thank you, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome you to our meeting this evening, we appreciate you coming out. We'd like to begin with our introductions. To my far right, we have Board Member Greg Alek; to my immediate right, Board Vice President Michael Gebhardt; to my left, Jim Bax; to his left, Board Member Annie Croft; to her left, we have our Superintendent Dr. Thomas Jama; and to his left, our interim Treasurer, John Scott. And thank you for being here, we look forward to having a great time going on the road and going throughout the district, it gives us a wonderful opportunity to come to your neighborhood, to make it easier for you to attend a meeting, sometimes it makes it a little more difficult to find us where we are, but it's always published, you can always go to the website. I'd like to begin this evening with our Board recognition, I would first ask our Treasurer if he had an opportunity to pick up our sheet for those that are signed up this evening to address the Board. And this evening, we have the both honor and pleasure of introducing and recognizing an Aliria High student and Boy Scout who has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, his name is Anthony McAvick, and we would ask him at this time if he would come forward, please. If you would, please have a seat and make sure your mic is on. Go ahead, if you would introduce yourself.
My name is Anthony McAvick and I live on 625 Abbey Road, North Abbey Road, in Aliria, Ohio.
Thank you, and I'm gonna ask you to speak up a little, we have a good crowd here this evening, could you first tell me, who did you bring with you this evening?
I brought my mom, Kelly Berry.
Kelly Berry, could you please stand? Thank you very much. And we're gonna ask, or begin by asking you if you could please just tell us a little bit about your project.
Okay, well, there was a, there was like, it was, at my church, the back end property of my church, there was the tree line, it's all overgrown and stuff, and there was a bridge in the back, and it was really old until not a lot of people knew about it, and I was asking around and people like, they didn't know it was there.
Just making sure that they can hear to the back, thank you.
And it was, it was broken, there were some boards that were like, they were loose, and it wasn't very safe anywhere, like the handrails, they were coming undone, and it was, it was ugly looking, so we, I asked, there are some people that I know, and they're really, they're good with construction and stuff, and so I asked them if they could help me with like rebuilding the bridge, and they said they could, so we went out and they, we got the materials, and I asked around for people to help, and we had about fifty-some people show up that day, I think, and then, yeah, we worked from like, it was like nine o'clockish in the morning, we were there till about five o'clock, I wanna say, we had lunch and stuff, and then after that was all over, I came back on a different day and I helped, I stained the bridge with my dad, and then, it looks really nice now. And then, in addition to the bridge, we, the part that was overgrown, the foliage and stuff, we hacked that all out, and it was, there was, there was like a, there was like a little, like a river below it, like, stream, that's the proper word, and it was all gunked up and stuff, so we cleared all that stuff out, and so it could start flowing again.
And if I understand correctly, part of doing this project is you have to put together a budget, you have to get the resources, you have to really coordinate all of the volunteers, you really take control and make this project happen. Could you tell us, and please recognize your troop, and if you would, please, your leaders in your troop as well?
My troop is 130, and our Scout Master right now is Ken Allred, and then, I don't know who the Assistant Scout Master is at the moment, I think we just got a new one, I don't, I don't know, I don't remember who it is, like I know who it is, but I don't know who it is.
And if I understand correctly, it's Ken Allred, and Mr. Allred was not able to be with us because he is in the military service and he is in Italy, so he's not able to be with us, but I'm sure he would, again, as he wrote and expressed to us that he's very proud of you and the job that you do and the example that you give through completing this project and through all of the badges that you've earned, we really have known throughout the years how the scouting program develops leadership, character, all of the things that are important about being a good citizen of the community, and we really applaud you for the work that you did and for accomplishing that, and we'd like to recognize you, we have a certificate of recognition for you this evening. And on behalf of the Aliria Board of Education and Administration, we recognize Anthony McAvick for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout with the Boy Scouts of America, December 16th, 2015, and we congratulate you, congratulations. Thank you, and we also, again, we thank his mother for being here, being here with us this evening, it takes a lot of support to get to all the meetings, to get through the earning of all those badges, it takes a lot of support, so congratulations to all. At this point in the agenda, we would like to move to a presentation, and I believe that we are going to have our Eastern Heights Band Director, Mrs. Megan Brawley, please come forward and share some information with us on our presentation.
Thank you, this is the Eastern Heights Steel Drum Ensemble. Where's Dr. Benetto? Thanks to Dr. Benetto, this group would not exist without her. Back in 2009, she invited me to go to the National Middle School Conference in Indianapolis, and between exhibits and things, there was a steel drum band playing while everybody was walking around and doing different things, and I was like, we can do that here, and with her support and the support of the Nord Foundation and the Aliria Schools Endowment Fund, this group was born. So we started, I got the steel drums, we started out with six, and I used them in class, we used them together, and then it came together, we had a piano, we had a drum set, and now we've added more, so thanks to the generosity of others and Dr. Benetto, we have an awesome steel drum ensemble here. I believe we are the only performing steel drum ensemble in our county, I would really say the area, and especially for middle school, it's a pretty unique opportunity. So, we're gonna play some songs for you, we're gonna start out with a traditional Jamaican song called "Comeback Liza," then we're gonna go to a little-known Jamaican Christmas carol called "Sing Me Now of Christmas."
We're gonna continue on with Silent Night.
So, all of our members are eighth graders, they're very busy people, they have incredibly high grade point averages, they're incredibly busy, most of them play multiple instruments, they're all in eighth grade band, they were selected for this group, and not all the kids who wanted to make the group were selected because they didn't have enough drums, so we like to give a little history of steel drums as we do our presentations. What you see before you is, courtesy of the Aliria Schools Endowment Fund again, we call this Tambu Bamboo. These steel drums were born on the island of Trinidad, and Trinidad had a large population, many different cultures, there were African slaves who were there, there was upper classes and lower classes, so the lower classes, they would communicate, they would do drums and they would protest in the streets, well, they took their drums away, they said, "You can't do that," so they used whatever they could, they used bamboo, they used car parts, we have a brake drum here, anything metal they could get, they would use and go through the streets and use, it was called Tambu Bamboo. So, you know bamboo brakes, it's a real durable thing, so they started using trash cans, car parts, Trinidad, we're both two, there's a lot of leftover oil barrels, so they found if they took the oil barrels and hammered them in, they could get certain pitches, and that's how steel drums are born. So next, we're gonna do what we call Tambu Bamboo, which is a rhythmic, a freestyle rhythmic composition, which they compose themselves. Tonight is our first performance of the year, due to a illness by me, we had to cancel a concert, so I'm really proud of this group, they work after school, they were chosen to do this, they came in June, we did a, we called it Steel Drum Camp, we had a couple hours together, and they've given up a lot of time to do this, so I would just like to congratulate them for all their hard work. All right, while the boys were at sports one day, the girls learned a song, so they're gonna play "To Joy," and we're gonna finish up with Jingle Balls after that.
Did you introduce the student?
Oh, sure.
Please.
Okay, there we go, okay. Again, these are all eighth graders, we have Jamison Love, Mr. Streeter, Mr. Ryan Streeter, we have Miss Aiden Zhang, Miss Kalen Straderman, Miss Remy Reichlin, Mr. Luke Coward, Miss Olivia Garcia, Miss Marley Breeze, and Miss Eliana Duncan. We also have Miss Katie Chismar, but the flu got her today, so, so again, I'm just really proud of them, they're busy kids, they do a lot of things, and they've worked really hard, so. If you wanna hear us again, we'll be Great Noah's Mall at 10:30 on Friday, so.
Yeah, great, great.
Thank you for having us.
10:30 Friday at Midway Mall. I would like, Great Northern, thank you so much. I would like to, as well, on behalf of the Board, thank you for all the time and the effort and your willingness to, to work with this group and to put in the time, and I would like to ask if, I'm sure that they have family and friends that have come out to support them and that are part of helping them get where they need to be, and part of the reasons they're able to excel academically and be able to take on these additional responsibilities, so would you please have anyone that came with you this evening and to support you in our audience, would you please stand so we can recognize you as well? Thank you very much, and you mentioned that without the support of Principal, Ms. Kim Benetto, that this, we would not be able to have this project happen, I would ask Kim to stand, thank her for hosting us this evening. And, and Kim, would you please have any of your staff and the, anyone here from your Eastern Heights, that, or middle school, excuse me, that you have here this evening, please stand so we can recognize them for support, their support as well? Thank you, great job, great teamwork. And this place on our agenda is set aside for visitors' comments, the Board always encourages citizens and members of the community to attend Board of Education meetings, normally the Board meets twice during the month, persons wishing to address the Board are asked to please sign up on the night of the meeting with their name and the topic that they wish to present, they are given five minutes, up to five minutes, to address the Board, if additional time is needed, they are asked to please contact the Treasurer's office and to make arrangements, they can be given up to 15 minutes to, again, to give the topic they wish to address and to be scheduled to be on the agenda, they can be given up to 15 minutes. We don't have anyone here this evening, our, those we had signed up were for our scout this evening, so we will move to Board Member Discussion Items. I would just like to begin at our last meeting, I know we had Terry Doan, many of you know Terry and Lori Doan, and Terry was with us although his father was very gravely ill, he still is very much dedicated to the schools, and we'd just like to send our condolences in the passing of his father, Russ Stone, on behalf of the Board. Board, do you have any other items for the Board Member Discussion this evening?
Mrs. Benetto? I am missing a garbage can for my house that lived down the street, if you haven't seen any, have you? Okay.
Any, any other items, Board, this evening? I hope it was a new one, that's all I have to say. I just would like to ask Vice President Gebhardt, I wanted him to know that at our last meeting, he mentioned that he carved this bell, and I had three people approach me after the meeting and ask if they could put a place in order, if you'd be, if you're taking orders for carving these bells?
Did I say that? Yeah, you said that.
You said you did, yes, and people who were interested, you do such a fine job, they were interested, so. Hearing no other items to come before the Board this evening, I will move to approval of the meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to approve the Board of Education Record of Proceedings for the Meeting of November 18th, 2015, have a motion by Mr., was moved by Mr. Alek and seconded by Mr. Gebhardt, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, I would ask Mr. Scott if he would please call the roll.
Mr. Alek?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Croft?
Aye.
Mrs. Corpus?
Aye, motion carries, and move to the Treasurer Action Items, Mr. Scott.
To accept the financial report for the month of November 2015, which includes all bank reconciliations, investment reports, cash balance reports, and appropriation expense reports as detailed in Enclosure G1, Item Two, to acknowledge, express appreciation, and accept the following gifts and donations, South Logan Lumber in specialty of 226 Boston Avenue in Aliria, has presented a donation of wooden handmade sleds valued at $500 to the kindergarten students at Prospect Elementary, the donation will be used for a craft project with students. Next donation is from Shannon Corp. from 203 Golf Road, Aliria, has presented a donation of a slightly used drum set valued at $100 to the band at Northwood Middle School, the donation will be used at the Northwood Middle School to give drum students exposure to additional types of percussion. The Green Circle Growers Incorporated at 51051 US Highway 20 in Oberlin- The Green Circle Growers Incorporated at 51051 US Highway 20 in Oberlin has presented a donation of $200 to the Anti-Bully Task Force at Eastern Heights. The donation will be used to help purchase T-shirts for the entire building. The Chronicle Telegram, 225 East Avenue, has presented a donation of $100 to the Student Council at Northwood Middle School. The donation will be used for raffle prizes to raise money for the Not Forgotten Box. Lastly, the Alaria High School Class 1943 has presented a donation of $465.94 to the Principal's Fund at the Alaria High School. The donation will be used in any manner that is deemed most appropriate. Item three, to approve the attached list of purchase orders in order to comply with the district's purchasing procedures as detailed in enclosure G3. Item four, to approve the OSBA Annual Membership for the calendar year 2016, not to exceed $8,354. Item five, Madam President, I'd like for the board to consider approving items one through four.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the items as recommended and presented by the Treasurer. Are there any addition corrections or comments?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
I have a question. Mr. Scott, on Fund Number 24 in the report for the self-insurance, could you just explain a little bit why there's such a large encumbered balance of $444,000 for the year? Is there anything special with the self-insurance that we should be aware of?
No, I do not.
Okay. Could you check into that and follow up with us on that?
Sure.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. I would just like to comment and to thank the Anti-Bully Task Force. They gave us the candy canes here and just to take the moment to recognize them for all that they do, they're certainly recognizable out in the district, out in the community, for the message that they bring, for the great performance. Whenever we have them anywhere, everyone's always pleased to have them come and I wanted to thank them. I see they had a donation here and thank them for their donation to us of the candy canes and just recognize the work that they do. Hearing no further questions or comments, would you please call the roll?
Madam President, who hit the motion?
The motion was by Mr. Gebhardt. And a second was by Ms. Croft.
Mr. Gebhardt?
What, Mr. Gebhardt moved?
Aye.
Oh, I am so sorry.
Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Backs?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mrs. Carpus?
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Scott, do you have any other or report for us this evening?
None at this time, Madam President.
Hearing none, I will move to Superintendent Action Items. Dr. Jama?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to recommend the following items for your approval this evening. Item number one, to approve the purchase of 300 Lenovo N21 Chromebooks from CDWG at a cost not to exceed $66,000. These will be Chromebook carts that will be utilized throughout the district for our students in the different buildings. Item two, to approve the out-of-state field trip for Eastern Heights Middle School, sixth grade students to attend the No-Walk Tour of Pittsburgh in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania on May 27th, 2016, as detailed below. And this will give our students here at Eastern Heights Middle School an opportunity to go to the Science Museum in Pittsburgh. And the other opportunity they'll have that is to ride the Duquesne Incline on Mount Washington. So it'll be a wonderful experience, even though it's in Pittsburgh and we love Cleveland, Pittsburgh does have some beautiful things.
They do.
Item three, to approve the overnight field trip for Alaria High School students participating in the Special Olympics to the Ohio State University in Columbus on June 24th, 25th, and 26th, 2016, as detailed in enclosure J3. Also, item four, to approve the overnight and out-of-state field trip for the Alaria High School wrestling team to participate in the Beast of the East National Wrestling Tournament at the University of Delaware in Newark, Delaware from Friday, December 18th through Monday, December 21st, as detailed in enclosure J4. And I know I've spoke to the board and our community a lot about our wrestling team and we have an outstanding head coach with Coach Burnett and we have an incredible team with our wrestlers. And we're hoping for many, many great things to come this wrestling season. We're hoping for that ring and let's just keep our hopes high and we'll see what happens.
Absolutely.
Item five, to authorize contracts for the 2015-16 school year for Alaria City Schools to provide special education services for non-resident students. These services are contracted due to open enrollment, court placement, parental institutional placement, or cooperative agreement. The school districts are Clearview Local Schools, Cleveland Metropolitan City School District, and the Lorraine City Schools. And I know I've brought these to the board multiple times and it's the agreement between our district and those districts. Item number six, to authorize the purchase of one Ford E350 16-foot box truck from Nick Abraham Auto Mall at a total cost of $35,587.74. Purchase under State of Ohio Term Pricing Agreement, which has already been competitively bid and which therefore does not require bidding by the Alaria City School District. This new truck will be used by the Food Service Department to deliver food. Madam President, that concludes my recommendations under this section this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Croft and a second by Mr. Gebhardt to approve the items as recommended by the superintendent. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mr. Scott, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Backs?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mrs. Carpus?
Aye. Motion carries. Dr. Jama?
Madam President, I do not have any items under Superintendent Other, Section K, but Madam President, I do have items under Section L, Personnel Actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Please.
Madam President, I would like to approve the appointment of certified staff as detailed below. And as you can see, we have additional substitute teachers on our list. And I'm proud to present to the board this evening and compliment our Human Resources Department for doing an outstanding job in getting additional substitute teachers in our district. Since October 1st, we've had the ability to hire 15 new substitute teachers to our district. And again, I believe the article that was done by Amy Higgins' office with the Pioneer Press as well as the recruitment by our HR office has allowed us to increase our numbers, which again helps us when a teacher is ill and requires a daily substitute. So that is excellent news. Item two, to approve the resignation of the following certified staff member as detailed below. Item three, to approve the Unpaid Family Medical Leave Act of the following certified staff member as detailed below. Item four, to approve the appointment of the following classified staff members as detailed below. And following the recommendations, we do have several staff members here tonight to be introduced, Madam President, just so you are aware. Item five, to approve the Unpaid Family Medical Leave Act of the following classified member as detailed below. Item six, to approve the unpaid leave absence of the following classified member as detailed below. Item seven, to approve the appointment of the following EHS student workers as part of the rental team for the 2015-16 school year for the Performing Arts Center at $12.50 per hour as detailed below. And again, this is a wonderful opportunity for our students at Alaria High School, the opportunity to gain employment, helping the district, and those students who are very familiar with our Performing Arts Center. And again, these fees are paid by rental agreements.
Right.
Item number eight, to approve the following employees and non-employees as game workers for their athletic services as detailed below. And again, these are workers who help our athletic department, whether it's a basketball game, a wrestling match, or an event that takes place within the Alaria City School District, specifically at Alaria High School. Madam President, that concludes my recommendations under Personnel Actions by the superintendent and request your consideration for approval.
I would entertain a motion to approve the items as presented and as corrected and amended to represent and reflect on page seven you should have before you. For Ms. Gill, the removal of substitute paraprofessional. And for Ms. Gill, under substitute personal attendant, a correction in the amount, the hourly amount. Do I have a motion to approve as amended and corrected to reflect those changes?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Gebhardt.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Elick. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Backs?
Yes.
Mrs. Croft?
Aye.
Mrs. Carpus?
Aye. Motion carries. Dr. Jama?
Madam President, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Gary Taylor, our Human Resources Director, as he introduces our new staff members, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jama, board members. I'd like to, it gives me a lot of pleasure to welcome three new additions to our Food Service Department. Although they've been here in other roles, they're here on a regular basis. First, Kim Massey. Kim, would you stand? Kim will be over at Windsor School. Julie Summers in our Food Service Department at McKinley. And Peggy Butler, Food Services over at Oakwood. Welcome.
Welcome. Hearing no one else, Superintendent, do you have any other reports for us this evening?
Madam President, I do not have any other personnel items, but I do have several things to report on this evening that I'm very happy about. Going along with the opportunity to meet with our community members at the Superintendent Community Forum, yesterday I had an opportunity, along with Ms. Higgins, to have our forum at Hazel's Family Restaurant, which was a wonderful place to hold the forum. We had an opportunity to eat breakfast as well as talk about the exciting things taking place in the Alaria City School District. And the discussions were broad yesterday and exciting and, again, it gave me an opportunity to highlight the many positive things taking place in our school district and in our classrooms on a daily basis. And I love to share that information with our community members. And it's also nice for the community members to share the things that they enjoy seeing and they also get to share items that they would like to see change or improve. And so all the information from these forums have been documented and if there's areas that we're able to change or improve on, we look into that and take all those items very seriously. And again, it's just an opportunity for me to share the great things that I get to see on a daily basis as the superintendent visiting the different buildings. So again, the forum at Hazel's went well yesterday and I know calls are coming into the superintendent's office and our community relations office inviting us to go out into the community again. We'll be meeting at the Cascade Cafe, I believe, in February. We'll be meeting at, I'm drawing a blank here, Amy. We'll be doing an afternoon meeting at Smitty's Restaurant. And I believe there was another call coming today, but I'm drawing a blank on the, that's what, see, I turned 50, what, a month and a half ago and I'm already having neurological misfires, so bear with me. But no, the community forum yesterday at Hazel's went fantastic. Again, this has been a wonderful opportunity for me to meet with the community and both have open discussions. I'd also like to just commend the Board of Education as well as our panel last week with our master planning session that took place last Thursday. It was a wonderful opportunity for members of our administrative team as well as our community members and as well as our architect and Burgess and Burgess to share some very enlightening and positive information with the Board of Education. I know the article that was in the paper is the next day, we're very positive, talked about the different presentations that were presented last Thursday. And again, I just would like to commend the board, commend the panel, and commend the community for such an awesome opportunity as we move forward into the 2016 calendar year of presenting the community with our master plan and the opportunities that that's going to create with rebuilding our district in grades pre-K through 8, as well as having an opportunity to look at our athletic facilities and look at the complex as we move forward. So I just want to highlight and announce that. And then finally, over the last couple weeks, I'm telling you, with the way it's going with food and cookies and holiday parties and concerts and it's just been wonderful. I had an opportunity to read to preschoolers today, a book on the bear sleeping almost through Christmas, but the bear finally did wake up and brought back memories of my days teaching kindergarten in the Lorraine City School District. But I had an opportunity to read to our preschoolers today, had an opportunity to read to some third graders and kindergarteners at Ely, as well as visit many of the buildings and the many, many exciting things that are taking place in our district on a daily basis. And again, you're going to hear me say this over and over again, but by God, when you see it all the time, you're going to talk about it. And the things that are taking place in our schools and in our classrooms are second to none. And I commend our staff for the hard work that you do each and every day, in the classrooms, in the kitchens, on the buses, in the custodial departments. You're doing a bang-up job and it's greatly appreciated what you do each and every single day for this school district. And with that, Madam President, I am complete.
Thank you. And the board as well would like to echo the same when we're out in the community. That's always what we hear about, the job that's done by those of the district and whether it is someone talking about going to a concert and how clean things are, realizing that we don't, every building isn't new. Every building isn't easy to clean. Every building, you know, there's a lot that goes into that, even when the transportation, the food service, everyone together. And again, I'll go back to opening day when Dr. Jama, you talked about a family and everybody working together and you see it on a daily basis and I think the community recognizes that as well. So we'd like to thank everyone for the job that they do in making the Alaria City Schools the district that they are, that is recognized by the community and appreciated by the community, not only for the educational opportunities that they present, but for all the opportunities that they give the children and the way that they treat the community when they come into the building. These buildings, everything that the district has belongs to the community. And for them to know that we share that, we open that, that they're children, that the community benefits from the use of these facilities, I'd like to congratulate them on that again and say thank you for all that they do. And also, the presentation that we had last week, Dr. Jama, the panel did an excellent job, all the work, all the meetings, did an excellent job of presenting that information and getting it out so that when you saw it in the press, it was accurate, it was something that the community could look at and begin to think as we go forward to the community engagement session, that there's good information, good work, data-driven, everything's there. And we would like again to thank Board Member Greg Elick as our liaison to the panel for all of the work and attending all the meetings. And it's an exciting time to look at that going forward. And part of that is just what you mentioned about, and you have shared with us, that when you're reading to the kindergarten students, when you're going to something in the high school, when you're attending these concerts and being forced to eat these cookies and to have all these treats out here, that when you're doing that, you're listening, that it's very important. And you have shared with us that you get ideas and information and feedback from the kindergarten students, from everyone when you're out there, not only just these community sessions. So it's important to know that you're listening, that you're bringing that information back and that they have a voice. Everyone has a voice. And you listen to that and consider that. And as you said, I appreciate it, I did get to see the article about the session. And I think when people see you had some questions there, you had some things coming forward, and as you said, sometimes they have concerns. I know one of those was transportation that you've been able to look at, to address. But when you look and you see what they have, what they bring, and those concerns, I think the community can see that when you're willing to say, here are some warts, here are some things we're working on, and honest about that, that you can build that trust, that there's honesty throughout the message that's brought forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Madam President.
And at this place in the agenda, I would begin with item one under Board of Education, Organizational and Regular Board Meeting, presented...
So moved, Madam President.
I have a motion by Mr. Backs. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
I have a second by Mr. Elick. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Shouldn't Annie be made president from January 1st to January 6th?
No, it occurs at the organizational meeting.
But what happens if something happens in between there?
If there's anything that happens in between there, Mr. Scott?
No, what normally happens is you're still the president until you're replaced.
Correct.
You're not going to get replaced until January 6th.
That's correct. It reads as duly sworn, as elected and duly sworn and you serve until the appointment of the next, is how it reads. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Just a clarification, Madam President. The board meeting on the 6th will take place at the Administration Center.
Thank you.
Moved Crestwood, the monthly meeting at Crestwood will take place, the second meeting of the month in January, but the meeting on January 6th will be at the Administration Center in the boardroom.
Thank you. And do you have a time for that?
5:30.
5:30 as well. So the meeting will be 5:30 PM on January 6th at the Administration Building with moving the on-the-road board meeting to the second meeting of the month. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax?
She's not going to.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mrs. Carpers?
Aye. Motion carries. Under Board Member Training, motion to approve Board Members Kevin Brubaker and Greg Elick to attend the New Board Member Academy on January 9th, 2016, and January 10th, 2016 in Independence, Ohio. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Mr. Bax. At this time, I'm going to ask again if Mr. Brubaker, Kevin Brubaker, would please stand so that you can see. We have spoken and welcomed him as the new board member coming on board, but I'd like you to be able to put a face to the name. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Epstein.
Oh.
You're fine. Mrs. Carpers?
Aye. Motion carries with one abstention by Mr. Elick. Thank you. Item six, Board Member Training. I have, will entertain a motion to approve Board Members Jim Bax to attend the New Board Member Academy on January 9th and January 10th in Independence, Ohio.
So moved.
Madam President?
Yes.
I need to add Ms. Croft to that list.
Thank you. And if you would please are willing to amend your motion to include Ms. Annie Croft to be in attendance as well?
Yes.
He's willing to amend by the motion. Do I have a second to the motion that reads Board Members Jim Bax and Ms. Annie Croft to attend the New Board Member Academy? I have a second by Mr. Gebhardt. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Epstein.
Ms. Croft?
I, Epstein.
Mrs. Carpers?
Aye. Motion carries with an abstention by Mr. Bax and Ms. Croft. Under Board Reports, do we have any reports this evening?
No.
No?
Good to see Mr. Wells back.
Welcome back and moving well. Good. Hearing no further reports, I would move to request, I would entertain a motion for, to request an executive session for the purpose of considering the purchase of property for public purposes or for the sale of property for competitive building and to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance or negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance, the executive session being determined to be necessary to protect the interest of the applicant or the expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project. These are with possible action to followed under Ohio Revised Code 121.22. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, but I'm not reading all that.
I have a motion. I'm sorry, Mr. Gebhardt moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second, please.
Mr. Bax seconded. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mrs. Carpers?
Aye. Motion carries. We're going to executive session and we will be returning.